I'd like to welcome you to the Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees meeting today is Thursday, April 28, 2022. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you. Before we get started, we have a public comment, Mr. Gates. Yes, we have Rocco Williams. Come on up, please. Good afternoon, how are you?
There we go. Good evening. My name is Rocco Williams and I'm a K-12 Science Curriculum Coordinator for Fort Worth ISD. This spring, our department worked diligently to bring back the district-wide science fair that had been on a two-year hiatus due to COVID. A big component of any science fair is having the projects judged. And historically, we have looked to partnerships and volunteers to help complete this task. This year, we had close to 120 projects submitted, and we also like to have at least two judges look at each project. All that to say that this is not a task that can be accomplished by just a few people. I wanted to come tonight and personally thank the TCC staff who were so willing and eager to sign up and help us with this. In total, we were able to get 15 volunteers from the community to help judge our projects, and eight of them were from TCC. Your professors specifically were incredibly reliable, professional, and knowledgeable. TCC's support very clearly was a contributing factor in our event being a success. So with that, I'd like to individually thank the following staff members for their support. From the Trinity River Campus, Mark Ailey from the Life Sciences Department. From the Northeast Campus Biological Sciences Department, Laura Kincter, James Harmon, and Daniel O'Connell. From the Southeast Campus Physical Sciences Department, Mo Chaboni. From the Northwest Campus Geology and Physics Department, James Hob and Catalina Boudreau. And from the Northwest Campus Computer Science Department, Steve Smiley. Once again, I want to thank you for supporting the Fort Worth ISD Department in this event, and we look forward to a continued partnership in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Williams, I was going to ask you, the ones that were chosen as the, I guess, the tiers, the top tiers, where do they, are they being displayed anywhere?
So they are, so the top 10 tiered projects were on display at the Fort Worth Museum of Science and History for Easter weekend. So they were there from Thursday evening to Sunday night.
Thank you. Thank you very much for considering us. We appreciate the partnership.
Absolutely.
Yes. Any other questions for Mr. Williams? Thank you for coming out. We appreciate that.
Thank you all.
And I want to add my thanks and appreciation, not only to him for reaching out, but to our faculty and staff who cooperated.
Absolutely. They participated and represented. Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Thank you, Mr. Williams. We appreciate you. Yes, kudos to everyone that participated. That's fantastic. So I think we also have a special presentation, Dr. LeBlanc.
Yes, thank you. So Tia, are you ready? So it's, this is a time to celebrate. We have a Joint Consultation Committee. These are faculty members who are elected members. They're elected by their colleagues, and they're all faculty members representing the different campuses. Not everyone can be here. We are still having classes and et cetera, so we have a few of the representatives from the Joint Consultation Committee. Michael Downs, who was leading this group, was unable to come. I have to say that Michael did an exceptional job as a leader. He worked tirelessly, as I know Tia will. She's already prepared for that. And it was a real pleasure and a privilege to work with Michael Downs. And so I will introduce then Tia Cole, who is the new leader of this group. And if, Tia, if you would take over then.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me now? Perfect. So again, I'm Tia Cole. I am English faculty at South Campus, formerly of Northwest Campus. And I will be your JCC Chair this year. We have Michelle York, who is English faculty at Northwest Campus, who is the outgoing Faculty Association President. We have Rosa Mendez, who is at Northeast Campus. She is the outgoing Faculty Association President. We have Michael Jackson, who is at South Campus, who is the now current Faculty Association President. Behind him, as you know, is Shawanda Riley. She is the JCC Chair-elect, so she is my partner this year. We have Richard Miller, who is Connect Campus, and he is the Faculty Association President-elect. We have DeLeon Addison, who is Trinity Campus Faculty Association President. We have Nicole Spears, who is the South Campus Faculty Association President-elect. We have Monica Escobar-LeBlanc, who is the Southeast Campus Faculty Association President. We have Stephanie Hawkins, who is the Southeast Campus Former Faculty Association President. And then we have Peter Martinez, who is our incoming Northeast Campus Faculty Association President-elect. Is that it?
So, Tia, you've never been short for words, so I'm really taken aback. Can you share a little bit about the Joint Consultation Committee and how you work together as a team?
Absolutely. So basically, each campus has a Faculty Association President-elect who represent them at the district level. We all create what is called the JCC or the Joint Consultation Committee. One person who is a former Faculty Association President serves as the Chair as elected by the colleagues. And then one other person serves as both the Faculty Association President on their campus and the Faculty Association Chair or Joint Consultation Committee Chair-elect in the same year. So it's quite a bit of work. But what we do is we look to represent our colleagues. We liaise with leadership. We serve as the faculty voice. So we meet with the Chancellor, the Provost, the Presidents of VPAs, all the folks, and really share not only concerns but good things, but we share in the decision-making at the college. And we are a way of making sure that we are sharing the load of what it means to run this college, which is a really awesome opportunity for all of us. And so that's pretty much what the JCC happens to be. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank each and every one of you for dedicating your time and commitment. I know that that's a lot. This is besides your daytime gig, so we certainly do appreciate that so much. Does anyone else have any comments?
So I don't know if you have, if you mind having your photo made with the Joint Consultation Committee.
Love to. Let's do that.
We've done that before, and it's always really a great opportunity.
Do you want to sit or stand here? How do you want to?
Standing or standing?
Okay.
I'm tall, so I'm going to stand in the back.
Anybody else want to sit?
We can put another chair here, Ken.
It's different depending on how.
Why don't you sit here? Go ahead. There we go. Can you get us okay? Do you want some folks to sit? People could stand here right behind us. Balancing the trustees. Let me close this. Let me move some of this. Trying to get some of the waters out of the way.
Just a little bit, but not. Just a little step back. Just a little step back. Oh, is it maybe so? And then, Mr. White, it's great. All right. Now I tell everyone down just so we have. Yeah, we're doing. Three, two, one. Good. That's awesome. Let me take a couple more in case there's a little. Three, two, one. And then last one, three, two, one.
Can you have his hair, his chair back? He's like, well, I guess I'm standing. They took the chair away.
Okay, well, that was wonderful to have.
Is there time for one more public comment?
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you so.
Did you sign up?
I asked if I needed to sign in at the front, and they didn't. They said, no, just go in. Okay, thank you so much. So hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having this open forum. My name is Janee Carrato. I am a Fine Art faculty here at the Trinity River Campus. I'm coming to you with a challenge that I'm facing with promotion and rank and tenure specifically. So I was hired in 2018. I have won multiple awards for students as well as myself since being here. And we've experienced a lot of success and growth in the arts program on our campus. I applied for promotion and rank and was denied with the sole reason stating that I did not have a doctorate, and I'm quoting here, "based on the availability of allowable doctoral programs in the areas that directly contribute to the improvement of instruction." So assuming none of you are subject matter experts, of course. The Masters of Fine Art is considered nationally to be the terminal degree. There isn't a PhD higher than that. But I am being asked to pursue an alternate route of study solely for the improvement of instruction. My concern is that in 2018, my colleague here at TCC, Professor Angel Fernandez, used the amendment in the DLC Local that outlined that there was an exemption where we could do like an additional application process to achieve promotion and rank. And he was not once asked to pursue or achieve or look into a doctoral program of any sort. He went through the application process, and he was granted full professor without issue. So, you know, I've done a lot of research trying to figure out why this would have been the rationale. I took it upon myself to give Saks a call, and even one of the Vice Presidents at Saks, it was Denise Young that I spoke with, indicated that it's nationally understood, like a widely accepted practice, to accept the Masters of Fine Arts as an equivalent to the PhD. And she found it interesting that some community colleges elect to ignore that and expect more. So my main concern here is there doesn't seem to be equity being used. I understand that this DLC Local document was amended and signed off on, I think, just yesterday. But it's also, I'm under the, excuse me, under the impression that that is for new hires. So I would still be eligible to utilize the previous exemption. So there just seems to be some inequity in the decision-making being made, and that concerns me greatly. And so I wanted to bring that to the board's attention so that perhaps we can have some consistency for promotion and rank in that regard. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for coming forward. We appreciate it. Mr. Gates, will you get that information card for us? Thank you so much. All right. Okay, we'll go ahead, and thank you for coming. We'll go on to Item 3, which is Board Business Items and Announcements. Approval of Work Session Minutes for March 10, 2022. Were there any questions or comments on that? Okay, we just need to have a motion. Okay, Mr. Barr, second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. 3C, Approval of Monthly Board Meeting Minutes for March 24, 2022. Any questions or clarifications on that?
I move for approval.
Okay, Mr. Greenhill, second by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We'll go ahead and go to Item 3D, which is Trustee Activities. Who'd like to start today? Mr. Hornsby, do you mind, please? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Well, good evening, Board members and public. I was blessed to attend the groundbreaking at Southeast Campus a couple of weeks ago, and a lot of excitement on the campus about that. And they had lots of exhibits and posters and things that the students were doing. I know that the speech that the young lady made is part of our packet. Thanks to Dr. LeBlanc for getting that and providing that for us, because the young lady did a wonderful job in representing the student body, the Student Government Association. And I also, on today, was able to go to Southeast Campus and to attend the First Choice Programs End of Year Program. And that's those children that have the, need special help in being successful in their lives. And so it was a great program as they danced and sang "Proud to Be an American." They sang a melody of patriotic songs, and they danced and prayed and did speeches. They even had a skit about a computer screen and what all the parts do. He was, he did went through the application process and he was granted full professor without issue. So, you know, I've done a lot of research trying to figure out why this would have been the rationale. I took it upon myself to give Saks a call. And even one of the vice presidents at Saks, uh, it was Denise Young that I spoke with, indicated that it's nationally understood, like a widely accepted practice to accept the Masters of Fine Arts as an equivalent to the PhD. And she found it interesting that some community colleges elect to ignore that and expect more. So, my, my main concern here is there doesn't seem to be equity being used. I understand that this DLC Local document was amended and signed off on, I think, just yesterday. But I, it's also, I'm under the under, excuse me, under the impression that, uh, that is for new, uh, new hires. So, I would still be eligible to utilize the previous exemption. So, there just seems to be some inequity in the decision-making being made and that concerns me greatly. And so, I wanted to bring that to the board's attention so that perhaps we can have some consistency for promotion and rank in that regard. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for coming forward. We appreciate it. Mr. Gates, will you get that information card for us? Thank you so much.
Give me a comment, please.
Okay, all right.
I know.
Okay, we'll go ahead and thank you for coming. We'll go on to item three, which is Board Business Items and Announcements. Approval of Work Session Minutes for March 10th, 2022. Were there any questions or comments on that? Okay, we just need to have a motion. Okay, Mr. Barr, second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Approval of Special Meeting Minutes for March 17th, 2022. Any clarifications or comments on that? Okay, I need a motion, please. So moved by Dr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr., was that Mr. Greenhill or Mr. Hornsby? Mr. Hornsby. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Three C, Approval of Monthly Board Meeting Minutes for March 24th, 2022. Any questions or clarifications on that?
I'll move for approval.
Okay, Mr. Greenhill. Second by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We'll go ahead and go to item three D, which is Trustee Activities. Who'd like to start today? Mr. Hornsby, do you mind, please? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Well, good evening, Board members and public. I was blessed to attend the groundbreaking at Southeast Campus a couple of weeks ago and a lot of excitement on the campus about that. And they had lots of exhibits and posters and things that the students were doing. I know that the speech that the young lady made is part of our packet. Thanks to Dr. LeBlanc for getting that and providing that for us because the young lady did a wonderful job in representing the, the student body, the Student Government Association. And I also, on today, was able to go to Southeast Campus and to attend the First Choice Programs End of Year Program. And that's those children that have, um, the, need special help in being successful in their lives. And so, it was a great program as they danced and sang. Proud to be an American. They sang a melody of, of patriotic songs. And they danced and prayed and, and, and did speeches. They even had a skit about a computer screen and what all the parts do. So, it was just really wonderful and great. And should really thank Dr. Carrie Thompson and her team of workers for the work they do with the First Choice Program. And it was wonderful to be a part of that today on the Southeast Campus with Dr. Coppola and his team.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hornsby. That's a wonderful event. Thank you. How many students were there today? Do you remember?
Twenty-one.
That's fantastic. That is wonderful. Congratulations. It's an excellent program. Thank you, Dr. Coppola. Mr. Greenhill? Would you like to share some?
Well, I, uh, uh, Reg has got some pictures. But I, one of the things that I did was is to, I attended the, uh, the Arts Festival. And at the Arts Festival, I went to both of the areas where our booths are. And, oh yeah, here they are. And that's the booth on the, on the northern end. It's called the Makers and they had all kinds of ways to make things. And that was very interesting. On the southern end, by the Sundance Square, it was the traditional TCC. See, they're, they're making things and, uh, but it was, it was very interesting. And it was, uh, a lot of fun. I, I also went to the other side and they had a lot of people to have conversations. El Toro was there and if that video is me dancing, uh-oh, okay. Oh, no. I can't believe you did that to me. Oh, gosh, okay. Well, you know what I was doing. I was, uh, dancing with El Toro. And it was, it was a lot of fun. Okay, Reg, you're, you're, don't do it. Okay. Anyway, that, another thing that I did was, uh, I went to the, uh, our table at, at the downtown, Fort Worth Downtown Ink, Ink, uh, gathering. It was very interesting. We've had some controversies in downtown Fort Worth, but it was a lot of fun. I did see Beverly Powell. I think that, uh, Dr. Morrison took it, took this screenshot of me and I'm wearing the same suit that, today that I wore then, the same tie. It's amazing. But, uh, I was, I, I guess I was discussing with her, uh, her, not running for Senator again. But Beverly Powell has been very, very, a very good team member in regard to higher education, especially community colleges. We were able to discuss things with her and she understood it. And, uh, and I was, I'm very proud of, of her accomplishments as a Senator. What else did I do, Reg? Oh, yes, I, 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 I came down to the, uh, every once in a while, I come to the campus to, uh, just see people. And, uh, I know there's been a lot of, um, conversations about advising. And so, I took this picture of, uh, before the advisors were going to advise the people at the Trinity Campus. And it looks like that to get them to get advised, you have to have food. So, uh, that's, that's the, uh, I'm sure that was a very successful, uh, event for advising. And I'm, I'm probably very sure, I'm very sure that each campus had the same kind of event. But, uh, that's really very impressive and I'm, I, I was proud to see it. That's why I took the picture. Reg, I think that's...
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill. Appreciate that. Dr. Morrison?
Hi, well, let me say that I've been so excited to follow TCC on Twitter and all the mini activities, um, of, across all of the campuses engaging students. I think you've heard me say before that during my undergraduate years, I was a student activities worker on my campus at Stephen F. Austin State University. So, I was always excited to see all the very, um, dynamic activities. And I wanted to share some information about one of Fort Worth's favorite families, certainly one of my favorite families. They're Arturo Martinez and, who is the creator of Arturo and his wife, Rosalinda Martinez, and their three children. They were featured in an article in 360 West entitled, "Putting the Blue Zones Power Nine Into Play." And of course, they're both employees here at TCC. And I've worked with them on various projects, um, over the years. And also, they, um, bring their children into their activities and with them to different community engagements. It's a wonderful, uh, article that talks about their work here at the college. Of course, Arturo is a wonderful creative, a working artist as well. And has had wonderful exhibits, um, not only here on campus at Trinity River, but at the Museum of Science and History, the Public Library, TCC, and the ADLR Cultural Center. Rosalinda is very active in the women's movements across the city and, um, had, was formerly president of the Library Board. I worked with her on that and several other things. But most excited is the work that they've done together with their children that they do as a family. And I believe that's why they were featured here. Two of their students are members, uh, students here at, uh, TCC. And we're, we can be excited about that. And also know that, um, their legacy, even though, um, they're employees here at TCC, uh, they, I think that their most important role is their role with their family across the community. And I think that is why they were, were highlighted as Power Nine people. And I want to congratulate them and their family and encourage them to keep, um, working in the community. We always thought that that was why it was so important, that college towns had an advantage because of the wonderful people who worked at the college would also contribute in the community. And this family is certainly a great example of that. So, I want to say congratulations, Arturo and Rosalinda and your three beautiful children for being featured in this article. Thank you. And tonight, if, um, Teresa wasn't presiding and I wasn't here, we might be attending the Great Women of Texas Event, which is being held at, um, I'm not sure where it's being held this year. I think the Fort Worth Club. It's always usually held at the Fort Worth Club. We have, again, this year have someone being highlighted. Doctor Dorothy Tina Jenkins, who is an Associate Professor of Behavioral Science on TCC South Campus and who's the project manager for, uh, our Visions Program, is one of the honorees tonight. And she was in the Leadership Class of 2018, Leadership Fort Worth Class of 2018. Is currently on the Leadership Fort Worth Board as their Diversity Chair. And we're just very proud of her work, grateful for her involvement, not only on the campus, but across the community. And we are always happy to have, uh, TCC people recognized for their work and their participation in the community. I know it'll be a great fun affair. You can see some of the other honorees. Rose Bradshaw, Dr. Jennifer Giddens-Brooks, Rosemary Cruz, Lauren Hill, Leah King, and Mary Margaret Lemmons, who will all been, uh, also highlighted along with about fifteen other women from Fort Worth. So, one of the reasons Fort Worth is such a great place to live and work is because we have wonderful, high-achieving women. And not only do they achieve themselves, but they encourage and inspire other women to achieve as well. So, thank you for letting me share.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. We are, it's one of our greatest assets, the people in the, in the community. Thank you so much. Mr. Barr, do you have anything you'd like to?
A, a couple of quick things. First, I want to express my appreciation to the members of this board and administration and everyone here at TCC who's been supportive of me and, and our family over the past few weeks and in the loss of my wife Karen, the passing of my wife Karen. The phone calls, the, the notes, uh, the encouragement, the flowers. All of that has been greatly appreciated and I thank everyone for that. On a slightly lighter note, uh, I, I walked through, uh, the Main Street Arts Festival and was very impressed with TCC's presence there. It looked good. That's a good place for TCC. I, uh, applaud all the volunteers who were there working. Fortunately, I was not there when Mr. Greenhill was. But I assure you, I would not have been suckered into that dance. I had no idea. And especially, I would not if there was somebody there to record it. So, uh, congratulations, Bill. Thank you.
Madam President, may I make another comment? I actually had a note from, um, past president of the board Louise Appleman, who reminded me, it looks easy now that TCC is at Main Street, but it was a real struggle, real battle to get the commitment for TCC to participate at the Main Street's Art Festival.
Oh, my goodness.
So, um, it represents great progress. And I, I'm told that they probably spoke to more than 10,000, probably 12,000 people there, which is really awesome. And, uh, I, I didn't get to make it there this year, but thanks for being such a good representative. And Bill, I can always count on you. Just to make it really dynamic. And if I'd been there, yes, I would have danced.
Thank you for that, thank you for that information. That's, that's, that's good to know. And it, look at all the folks that we're touching. And what I liked about it was seeing all the families that were there.
Absolutely.
Which is beautiful, yes.
Seems natural, but...
Absolutely, yes. Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Well, that video is positive proof that your knee is doing a lot better. I don't know about your dancing, but your knee is fine. Oh, well, I just wanted to highlight an event that is coming up nationally. Teacher Appreciation Week, May 2nd through the 6th. It's held annually during the first full week of May. And it's typically an event that is really celebrated across pre-K through 12 campuses. But I think something that is very special about Tarrant County College is the relationship that we have with our early college high schools. And, uh, this is just an example of how one community has decided that they would like to take that appreciation and extend it to those early college high schools, especially given, uh, that there are sometimes, um, gaps in parent engagement units at, at those types of schools. So, um, next slide. We, we took a look and noticed that we have early college high schools that are aligned, um, not just with Tarrant County College, but also, uh, councils of PTAs in Arlington, Birdville, Fort Worth, and Grapevine-Collville. So, um, Arlington ISD has reached out to those other councils of PTAs to see if there's a way that we can recognize early college high schools on those respective campuses at some point during Teacher Appreciation Week. If we go to the next slide, uh, I'm just thrilled. There are two slides worth of community partners who have signed on to, to help recognize our teachers and staff across our ISDs to include at our early college high schools. I am going to visit Southeast Campus on Tuesday. And we are gonna bring all kinds of goodies for, um, our teachers and staff. These community partners have really gathered together and are providing things like waters, sodas, brownies, notepads, pens, things that teachers really would like to have in bulk and will be making sure that every single faculty, staff, teacher has access to those things. So, um, we'll be bringing kind of a, a care package, if you will, uh, and are really encouraging and, and trying to help facilitate the other ISDs do the same at the other, early, early college high schools. So, um, that's, that's an example of a community that really gets behind the mission of what an early college high school does, uh, in our, in the lives of our families. So, that's what we're doing next week and, and I'll be sure to let you know how that goes.
Thank you.
And then, the other thing I wanted to report back out on, I don't know if we have a picture of, uh, the chamber? A couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity to attend the Fort Worth Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting. And it, this year, it was at Meacham Field. I've gotta tell you, it was pretty special. Myself, Mr. Hornsby, Dr. LeBlanc, Dr. Blakenbaker, and Shannon Bryan were able to attend. You'll see some of the aviation in the background. But what was really fun was that the keynote speaker was a gentleman named John Foley, who, uh, was the former lead solo pilot with the Blue Angels, uh, which are the US Navy's performance team. And I'll be aging myself, but he used a lot of references and videos, not only from Top Gun. I was 10 years old when Top Gun came out. My parents let me see it in the theater. And it was very instrumental in my decision to eventually join the military, though I did nothing with airplanes. But he also was able to show some clips from the upcoming Top Gun Maverick, which I am personally very excited about and my children have no point of reference to. But it, it, in all, it was a wonderful meeting. It was, it was great to be able to see all of the different businesses across Fort Worth, really in person together again. And to celebrate something, uh, as amazing as the, the theme of the event, which was taking flight. And it was really highlighting how so many things, um, that are happening in Fort Worth right now, to include Tarrant County College, are really taking flight and, um, gaining momentum. So, it was a, it was a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I really like the outreach we're doing with the early college high schools. It's fantastic. Thank you. Ms. Wood?
So, I had the opportunity, um, to go to the Arlington, um, City Council box the other night and meet a fantastic woman. That is Dr. Barbara Odom. She's on the City Council for, um, Arlington. And we talked about how, um, we can partner together with Tarrant County College and the City of Arlington. We're already doing a lot together. But we talked about other ways we can partner and we just had a great time. They have, uh, just a fabulous setup there and it's really nice. Um, and then the next picture. And this is also, um, this is Glenn Bucy. He is the Vice Chair of the Police Associ-, Arlington Police Association and PAC. And we talked about how maybe they have their own, um, police training, but maybe we could partner with them as well. Because after talking to Dr. Odom yesterday, they're always needing in the City of Arlington, more firefighters and more policemen. So, just another way that we can partner together. So, that was it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So, it's been a really active and a busy couple of weeks. And I thank you to every one of you for taking time out to go and, and visit all of these events and represent TCC and talk about our story. So, uh, I too attended the Main Street Arts Festival. It was fantastic. I, I wasn't dancing like Mr. Greenhill, but I did. It was a great event. It really, really was. And I just love the fact that there were so many families there. Also, I wanted to make note of the Tarrant County College Administrative Professionals Conference that was held today. I heard that it was very well-attended and that it was, um, actually coordinated by our HR Department. So many people were involved. I wish I could name everyone that participated. I heard that they had a very good speaker. But again, just want to congratulate all of the administrative professionals that are here at TCC. We thank each and every one of you for all the work that you do. I know there's, um, there's been much asked of everyone, but you all have just, uh, managed to stay the course and we thank you for that. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that, Dr. LeBlanc? Okay.
You did well.
Okay, all right. Also, wanted to make mention of, uh, the luncheon that I retire, I attended was the 2022 Spring Retirees Luncheon that was at the Northeast Campus. I want to thank, uh, Dr. Kenya, thank you very much for hosting. It was a wonderful event. You spoke beautifully. She taught, gave an update on what, um, the state of the college. Just a very brief update so folks would know what was going on. Also, President, the Northeast retired Northeast Campus President, Larry Darlidge was there. And, um, Northeast Campus President was there. Mr. Reginald Gates was there. And it was very well-attended. There were about 76 retirees and their guests. They've worked throughout the district. This event, I was told, is held twice a year. And this hadn't been held for some time due to COVID. And so, they were so happy to see one another and to reconnect. And it was hosted by the TCC and also the TCC Foundation. So, it was just a great event. And what I was so impressed with was how much they love Tarrant... And what I was so impressed with was how much they love Tarrant County College. And some of them, even after they retired, have somehow stayed associated with the college even after all these years. And they just could not say enough. And they just lift each other in so many ways. It was really a beautiful event. I was trying to calculate how many years these folks had put in, and I'd gotten up to 500 and something, and I was like, forget it. So the number of years was more than 500 as far as the number of years that these folks have put into this college. And they just love it, and they could not say enough wonderful things. So thanks again for hosting us. We appreciate that. Let's see. The other thing I wanted to talk about is there was an event that was held by the Hispanic Women's Network of Texas this past Saturday, and it's their annual LIP event, a celebration of, it's a scholarship event, which is Latinas in Progress. And Dr. LeBlanc gave some opening remarks, and it was very well-attended. That particular organization, Hispanic Women's Network of Texas, has partnered with TCC for many, many years to have their events. Of the young women that were granted or awarded scholarships, over 10% of them will be attending TCC. And the beauty of this is that, over the years, they have been working with TCC and hosting their events. But this is the first year that I'm aware of, Dr. LeBlanc. You can correct me if I'm wrong, that they will, there's actually a matching component that they're working with the foundation up to a certain amount. So those students that are awarded a scholarship up to a certain amount, there's a cap, I think it's $1,000 per student. So if they get a scholarship for $1,000 for the spring, or for the fall, and they maintain certain criteria, meet certain criteria, they will be awarded a scholarship for the fall. So that basically pays for their entire year, the fall and the spring. So it's a really, really good partnership. So up to now, they've awarded over $4 million in scholarships, and they're keeping track of these young women. And some of them are now part of the organization, so they are returning and they're giving back. So a lot of them began here at TCC. This one in particular is a student that attended the early college high school at Marine Creek, which is, I think, the first college, correct? The early college high school that we had. And she was awarded a scholarship at TCU, and it's a full ride. And she's just an amazing student. She's done very, very well in school, and she began here at TCC. So we're very, very proud of that partnership, and congratulations to her and her family as well. Is that all I had today, Mr. Gates? I think it is.
Yes. I must talk for a minute about an event. I actually was on campus last week, Thursday and Friday. I was on TCC South. I had blocked my calendar off to participate with Toro Talks, which was a collaboration with the Intercultural Network and some of the academic departments at TCC. And it was a very exciting and interesting two-day seminar for talking about social justice. And Sean King was here to talk with us, to encourage us, to show us how to organize. And also Jasmine Crockett, who is a freshman legislator, the youngest legislator, Texas legislator, came and talked to us about her engagement. And what was most interesting to me was that the young people there were not only eager listeners, but they were very vocal participants as he was encouraging them to understand their power and what they could do if they chose to use their voice and their energy for a cause. And so we had two animated people, Professor Jeffrey, and then on the left and on the right, Michael Russ, who is with the Intercultural Network. Those two gentlemen had worked very hard with a campus-wide committee to put this together that included students. It was well-attended, and it was very positive. So I was excited to participate. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that, and thank you for attending. It's exciting to see all those young people. You've got so much energy. It's great. Okay. We'll go ahead and go on to the agenda. We'll start out with 3E. For those of you that are new to our live stream, we had a work session that we've discussed these items to get questions answered. And if there are any subsequent questions, we get this information and material ahead of time so that we can, again, get any clarifications. So if it seems like we go through this a little bit quickly, it's because we've talked about and had questions answered already. So item 3E, that's consideration approval of payment to McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton for legal fees associated with the bond program in an amount not to exceed $255,000, $250. Ms. Carol Bracken.
Good evening. President Ayala, trustees, Chancellor LeBlanc.
I was like, Carol.
As you know, in years past, the firm of McCall-Parkhurst has been bond counsel to the college in connection with the $825 million bond issuance that was passed back in 2019 by the voters of Tarrant County. It's, we are preparing for the issuance of a second tranche of bonds, not to exceed $525 million in total. To that end, we will need to reengage with McCall-Parkhurst for the preparation of documents and so forth. One of the items that's set forth in your packet is our engagement letter with McCall-Parkhurst, which explains how their legal fees are calculated. If the full $525 million in bonds is issued, and at this point, I think that's probably not going to be what happens, the fee would not exceed $255,000, $250. And those fees are contingent, so that if, for some reason, the bond issuance does not happen, we do not have to pay those attorney's fees. But in order to begin preparing for that second round of bonds, which of course will be brought to the board for your approval before it occurs, we'll need to engage some lawyers to help us get it all good and papered up. If you have any questions, I'd be very pleased to answer them.
Any questions or clarifications for Ms. Bracken? Move to approve. Okay, that was Mr. Kine.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bracken. Next, we have 3F, consideration of approval of resolution and participation agreement to authorize Tarrant County College District participation in Saginaw Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number 1 and Appointment of Representatives. Ms. Susan Alanese.
Yes, Susan Alanese, the Chief Operating Officer. And last week, you received a presentation from a representative from the city of Saginaw regarding our participation. This meets the criteria that we normally establish, which is 50%. It's a 30-year TERS, and it does have a cap based on current year calculations. We are the last taxing entity to approve entry. The others have already agreed to participate. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or clarifications for Ms. Alanese?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Sir.
The motion was made by Mr. Greenhill, and I'm seconded by, I think, both, okay, Mr. Barr. Any, there's no further questions? Any, we've got the motion, now we need to vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right. 3G, consideration approval of amendments to board policies. They are DCB Local Employment Practices, DGBA Local Employee Grievances, and DLC Local Employee Performance Faculty Promotion. I think there, should I have to list all of those? Or, Ms. Bracken, would I, I don't need to? Okay. So there are listed those there. I know that we've discussed those at the last work session, but you want to talk about that? Give us some detail? Thank you.
Yeah. So this is the ongoing journey we've been on in terms of updating and codifying our policies and procedures here at the college. And so this is the latest round that involves some employment practices. The first one adds a grievance process for faculty who are denied tenure. The DGBA Employee Grievances also clarifies some distinctions between the different policies about what the appropriate grievance practices are. We also added a definition for a complaint to codify our practices about what's considered a grievable action within our college that would be handled by an HR investigation. It also established a 30-day working day deadline for grievances to be filed with HR to ensure that we're focusing and encouraging people to report in a timely way so that we can investigate in a timely way. This is consistent with or exceeds the, some of the local Texas community colleges that we took a look at. And then finally, DLC Employee Performance and Promotion largely updated the faculty promotion and rank process and added the grievance process for that and moved some of the policy that really is a procedure into the regulation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or clarifications?
Are we under a time constraint to approve this policy?
No.
The reason I ask that is because, if you recall at an earlier meeting, I suggested that since this is so important to faculty, and we've had so many comments, even as different board members have been out in the community of concern about it. And I'm not sure we, I'm not comfortable that we have given sufficient audience to some of the concerns. And I wondered if we took another look, or another listen, actually, if we might come to a better clarity and a greater comfort level.
Dr. Morrison, is that all of those? Are you just talking about the specific ones?
Well, I was specifically speaking to the tenure.
Okay.
The tenure issue. That has been, I think I've heard this term before, a thorn in our side for a while. And I just, maybe there are some better thinkers out there that, or some better solutions that we could talk about. I don't know that there is, but I just had that urgency.
Okay.
May I speak to that?
Certainly, yes.
So I appreciate the concern. We started this conversation over three years ago. There were, the policies have evolved over time, and in some cases, it looked like they were cut and paste. So we wanted to do it right, and we created what we called a faculty framework. And that took several years. It involved the faculty from all the camp, not all the camp, not all the, all 800 faculty, but representation from the different campuses, technical faculty, academic faculty. Each looks at this through a different lens, as you well know.
Right.
And so we worked very hard at creating a framework that would connect faculty excellence with student success. And that is a framework that was reviewed by the Joint Consultation Committee. It was reviewed on every campus. I personally went to every campus and had open forums to have conversations with faculty. We allowed them to have anonymous questions, concerns that were submitted to us, and we responded in writing. So we've taken this very seriously. In terms of what did they, what did the group, the faculty and instructional leaders agree, was critical for faculty to move forward. So in the business community, we're always talking about focusing on results. So what are the results that we wanted? Obviously, student success, measured by, you know, the number of students that complete a course successfully, the number of students that move from one course to another, that finish a certificate or finish their degree and move on. And so all of those variables were taken into consideration. In terms of what, how do you measure all of that with a faculty member working with students that are at different levels of learning and so on? And so we agreed that understanding the neuroscience of learning, in other words, do they know how the students learn? And the fact that they have different realities in their lives that impact their learning? Do they know their discipline well? There were lots of criteria in the framework that were taken into consideration that then were used to inform the policies that you have before you. So that was evaluating or determining, do the faculty merit moving from one level to the other? In terms of the procedures, we also cleaned those up and added steps in order to ensure that there was more objectivity. It is true, Dr. Morrison, that at one time, every campus made its own individual decision, independent of the rest of the district. So it was not unusual for a faculty member in one area to have the same qualifications and be promoted in another not, because they were different people evaluating them. Today, we are asking the vice presidents for Academic Affairs to work in concert. So all of these promotions, requests for promotion, tenure, et cetera, are reviewed by all of the vice presidents for Academic Affairs. What we've added to the policy, and this is why it's important to move it forward, is that we're making it more objective. But in addition to that, we added more steps. So there's greater accountability on the part of the administrators. So we take it to the vice presidents for Academic Affairs. There's a council. It also goes to the president's council. And so the presidents review that as well before it gets to the provost and executive vice chancellor office. And it's reviewed yet again. So the steps that we are adding to the policies make it more likely that there will be equity and that people will be treated the same across the district, regardless of what campus they're on. And this new policy will allow us to do that. There are extra steps put in there for, in order to hold the instructional leaders accountable. And there's other pieces that we don't have in the policy but that we are putting in place, and that's the professional development that we are asking. We used to ask for volunteers, would you like to do this professional development? And we realized that, while that's a nice gesture, in order for people to do their job well, it may be that we need to move into mandatory. And we've done some of that already. For example, when we purchased Canvas, which is a learning platform, we made it mandatory that every full-time and adjunct faculty member go through the professional development. And we have continuous professional development. So we want everybody to be successful. And it's more of a team collaborative effort than we've ever had before. And that's what we're striving for. Yeah, we've worked on this for over three years.
Dr. Morrison?
Okay. So let me just be blatant. So what about the issue that was brought forth today? I'm not asking you to answer it, but why are we still having those kinds of issues? And every, whether people come to the board, which is rare, that people come to the board and say it, as the young woman did tonight? I've heard those. And I hear them, that people are still festering. Whether they're still with us or not, they're still displeased and feel like they haven't been appropriately placed or tenured or denied tenure or whatever. And I'm not sure that what we've done addresses that. I'm not saying that we have to make everybody happy. But what I am saying is that we need to be very sure that the policies that we put in place allow for equity, uniformity, or according to the individuality. And that may seem that that is juxtaposition, but it's really not. Because a good policy can evaluate the uniqueness of one person and equate it to the uniqueness of another person if the, the measures are quantitative. So, I, I mean, I'm only one, but I just, I'm still not comfortable with it. I mean, there's probably been a lot of things that all of us have done that we're not comfortable with. This is so important. The whole basis of academic excellence and so much of my experience in higher education has been based on tenure or lack of tenure and granting tenure and encouraging people to have tenure. And I, I just know how important it is because it is important to generate excellence. And so, it's just a great concern that I have. I know that it's a very detailed situation. It's not an easy look at it, one, two, three situation. But it's troublesome. And I know you've worked on it. We have charged you with that and, and you've done a great job working on it. You know what my real concern is? That the people that report to you, whatever its level, the instructor or any of those levels are not being, what do you say, forthcoming? You know, I'm not gonna say they're not being truthful. They're just not being forthcoming or genuine when they talk to you about what the issues are or when they tell you what goes on in those meetings where they make those decisions. And I, I can't say it any more plainly than that.
That's very clear. Thank you for that. I, I will say that when the grievances have reached my office, I have taken it very seriously and we have reviewed all the documentation and have taken extra measures. In fact, there were a few times when the, the challenge was, yes, they, they didn't meet the criteria, but did others get approved before or on the, during the same timeframe that didn't meet the criteria either? And we reviewed 190 files from the same campus to ensure that that wasn't the case. And if it was, we were addressing it. On, on a positive note, as a result of that, we discovered that we needed to do quite a bit of work in organizing our files before accreditation came to visit us. And so, it was an inordinate amount of work, but it was well spent. And we were able to identify, you know, I, again, reviewing the documents, say yea or nay on whether people had met the criteria or not. The other thing that is true is that policies have changed from, over the years. And so, an individual that was maybe hired in 2006 would have been under a different policy from someone, say, hired in 2014. And so, that impacted the decision as well. So, the efforts that have gone into these policies is in order to make things better so that we have less of that. Will we always have everybody in agreement? I'm not sure that we will because we have so many faculty, full-time and adjunct, and really employees, we have thousands of employees. And at any given time, they're not always going to be seeing the results through the same lens. So, it's important that the board members are comfortable with these policies. It really is because that's a big job for you. Do know that a lot of effort has gone into making them better. And we've included faculty, the faculty voice, instructional leaders. We've included all the different stakeholders. And we will wait as long as we need to for you to be comfortable with, with the changes that we're proposing.
Madam President?
Oh, yes, did you have a question as well?
Can I speak?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
I have to concur with Dr. Morrison. These are the questions I get all the time. And they're lots of concerns. And so, she's been doing this for years and years and I trust her judgment. I also would like to have maybe more time to look at this and go over it. And if there's any improvements, maybe we could all talk about it.
Well, and I was gonna ask, and thank you for your comment as well.
I'd like to, excuse me, I, I, I am comfortable. And, and I would propose that we follow the advice, like you've always said we should do, is follow the advice of the recommendations of our, of our administration. A lot of effort has gone into this. And I believe that it is time to move on, as Dr. LeBlanc has said, that we should do. I cannot imagine another review of these things by having more review of these things that have not already been done. So, I, I am in support of passing this, this, these agreements.
Madam President?
Yes.
Could, could I ask just a, maybe a point of clarification? At our retreat work session, I think we spoke at great length about next steps in educating multiple groups of key stakeholders on changes in policy. So, with this and with other changes across the, the college, knowing that this was a step, not the step, not the final step. For, for those of you who don't feel comfortable with approving these right now, what, what do we need to ask for to help make everyone feel comfortable with them?
I've always said, I don't, I don't claim to have the answer. One thing that it would help me is that, as great as the policy is, there needs to be the insurance that if there was an error made and it needs to be, a particular judgment needs to be rescinded, that there's a procedure for doing that. I think you will recall hearing me saying, I, I got several stares across the table that I was once told by someone high ranking in government that you can give most anything approved in Texas with the right three signatures. And one thing that happens in that administrative stare step is that, number one, people can look at the person, the decision they made when it was handed to them and they can agree and sign it and just let it go. Or they can see something that's not quite right and send it back down for another review and then have it come back. And very often, that doesn't happen. That takes, you know, a little bit of bravery to send it back because people tend to support their, the people who report to them. And so, I think that one thing that needs to happen on a regular basis is, number one, all policy changes need to be tracked such that the policies that were there, say even five years ago, are tracked now that they've been transitioned, they can go back and be tracked. And that, so that if there is a concern, that can be done. And I believe that's being, that is there. And then, number two, is that some kind of exceptions report that if a, an exception was made that should not have been made or an exception should have been made that wasn't made, that it can be corrected. At this point, all I'm saying is, we should, we wanna get it right. We wanna be right, we wanna do right. Our people are our most important asset. We cannot continue to be successful in this college without great dedicated people, which we've always been privileged to have. And, and it's imperative that the policies that we put in place value the individuals as well as the interest of those individuals. And so, I, I would be remiss if I did not express my concern fully with the realization that I am one of seven and that everybody in here can count to four. And at any point, this board can pass anything it wants to with the vote of four to three, five to two, six to one, or seven to zero. And I'd have no expectations that everything that comes forward will pass seven, zero. I know from experience that that is not always gonna happen. But I also know that regardless of how it passes, when it passes, it's policy. And the board's gonna stand with it. And I, being a dedicated board member, I'll stand with it too. I'm not gonna be the one that's gonna get all those emails and complaints and concerns and rumblings that are gonna go across the campus through the administration. Dr. LeBlanc, right now, is in that hot seat. And she's dealt with it admirably for years. As executive vice chancellor and provost, that's been her lot. And I'm appreciative of the calm and uniform manner that she has gone about doing this. And as I said, one of my concerns is that some people that needed to be courageous and step forward and say, this isn't what should have been done or this is what was done and shouldn't have been done, haven't, haven't done that. And I'm saying to everybody who works for TCC and gets one of those walking around checks every month, that you need to make sure that what you're doing is, is the right thing. Not only for you personally, but for the college. Because at any point, you are the college. At any point that you interact with the public, with your students, or whatever, college is only as good and as credible as you are. So, if you want me to call the question, Mr. Greenhill.
No!
If you call the question, I will not be upset with you.
Thank you for your comment. I, I do have, did you have anything else?
No, I'm finished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. LeBlanc, just wanted to see whether or not, is there some sort of a standard that we modeled, whether it's a industry standard, whether it's a state standard that we kind of started with and then we, is that how that, could you talk a little bit about that? So, we, we kind of know where, what we had and where we are now.
So, so we do work with TASB on all of these policies. And it's, so, we don't go way out there and, and become outliers.
So, that we know there's an alignment and some sort of, okay.
So, there is an alignment.
Okay.
I, I do appreciate Dr. Morrison's comments in that we, we are moving toward greater accountability. And I mentioned that several times. And we talk about being more courageous and holding ourselves accountable. When the team is successful, we can all celebrate. When things don't go wrong, we're all accountable on that piece. And the fact that we're asking the instructional leaders to be more accountable and that we will have their backs if they have to have a courageous conversation where they're with them as they do that. Because we, we have to do that with, every day. And, and so, you're speaking to the accountability piece, if I understood correctly, more than to the details of the policy. And so, I, I appreciate that. And I, I do think that's something that all of us need to hear.
So, since there's been various questions on this, Dr. LeBlanc, I don't know if we, how the board would like to proceed. If they wanna just wait a month, is that going to affect anything?
I would like to make a motion that we approve it.
Okay.
If it's not seconded, then, then.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Can I make a substitute motion?
Sure.
I'd like, what, that, that's right. That's okay, go ahead, cuz we didn't get a second. So, you wanna make a substitute? That's okay, go ahead.
I'd like to move to table for, table this motion until the next regular board meeting.
Okay. Okay, so, all the policies, is that what you're just tabling?
I'd like to table business item 3G.
Okay. And then, we've got a motion of Mr. Kind to table this until the next meeting and then seconded by Mr. Barr.
Could I ask a question?
Certainly.
Yes. Would that include discussion at the work session, if appropriate, if, if necessary? I think.
I would think so.
Yes.
Because we would need, what are we gonna do? What, what's gonna happen?
Could I comment on that?
Certainly.
I, I, I think it's a mistake to, I understand this has been worked on for a long time and a lot of effort has gone into it. But if it's taken three years to get here, another month is probably not going to do any difference. Beyond that, I think that significant issues need to be resolved. And I would ask the members of the board who are very concerned about these matters to get with Dr. LeBlanc or whomever she designates and get comfortable with it or come up with an alternative, alternative language. And, and I, I, we could possibly pass this tonight. I think it makes a lot more sense to get all of the board on the same page and move forward with a unanimous vote. I suspect we can get there.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion to table it till next month and a second.
In the work session.
And, and we're gonna do that in work session. Is that correct? Okay. Do we need to make that? I think we're gonna discuss it in the work session. That's what we're gonna do. Okay, so your motion is to table this next meeting and we've got a second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So, we need to vote, so all in favor of the motion and the second, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. So, this will be moved to next month.
And may I, may I provide some guidance on a numbering issue on the remainder?
Certainly.
You'll note that the next item says number four, which is approval of the consent agenda. I believe those last three items were intended to be the consent agenda. Unfortunately, they were not based on the discussion that we had. So, you'll move right on to number five.
Okay. So, there's nothing in the consent agenda. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate your patience with this and thank you for the discussion. Okay, we'll move on to five, consideration approval of individual action items. Again, just a reminder for those of you that are watching, we've gone through these at the work session and we're discussed and questions were answered. So, we will vote on these tonight. Consideration approval with Midwest Luxury Publishing for the Lens Magazine for two years with three one-year options with first year cost of $154,486.62, the second year cost of $156,727.88, and cost increases not to exceed 2% annually unless authorized by the board. Ms., oh, you're gonna do it.
Shannon Bryant, I am not.
Okay.
Shannon was unable to be with us tonight, but you'll recall from the work session, she presented on this item pretty extensively. This is for the Lens Magazine that's published three times a week. She's gone through her third edition. And this was to, for lack of a better term, realize the economy's a scale and put it on an annualized agreement for printing, distribution of 14,000 each, each edition that she produces. It's a two-year deal with some options to renew. But what you see is the first year cost and the second year cost. And those are up to not to exceed amounts for each of those years.
Do you mind stating your name for the record? In case, if you don't mind, I apologize.
It's Reginald Gates, Communications and External Affairs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any clarifications? If not, we entertain a motion.
Just because there are people online, it was three times a year, not three times a week.
Oh, I apologize, three times a year. My mistake. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any clarifications? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, that's Mr. Hornsby and seconded by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll go on to item 5B, consideration approval of the three-year renewal of four. We'll go on to Item 5B, Consideration Approval of the Three-Year Renewal of Oracle America Inc. Licensing and Technical Support in the Amount of $2,465,102.25, which comes out to be $821,775.75 annually. Mr. Bob Pacheco.
Good afternoon. I believe you, did they get a copy?
Okay.
No, oh yeah, I got it, I got it. Sorry.
Do you mind mentioning your name and also your-
Bob Pacheco, the Chief Technology Officer for the District.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll get used to that.
That's okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
So you should have a, uh, amended copy with you, that we got final numbers from Oracle, actually, yesterday. And so we haven't had a chance to put it into the, uh, into the, uh, board, uh, information here. So what we're going to ask here is request the board to accept the language as amended and recommended by the staff. This is for the three-year renewal of the Oracle Licensing and Tech Support Agreement. And the, the actual true number is $2,395,524.24, and an annual of $798,508. So it's a savings that we've got.
That's great. Okay. Other than the amount, everything else that you've presented has remained the same? Okay. Any clarifications for Mr. Pacheco? Thank you for that savings. That's good. I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval as amended.
Okay. Mr. Barr, and seconded by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. 5C, Consideration and Approval of, uh, let's see, Consideration Approval of the Three-Year Renewal of Illusion Company LP CRM Recruit Licensing and Technical Support in the Amount of $238,660. Mr. Pacheco.
Yes, this is the three-year contract for the Illusion CRM Recruit. And if you recall from our work session, this is what we use for the application process that the students go through when they come to TCC.
Any clarifications or questions on that, Item 5C? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve, Ms. Wood. Seconded by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 5D, Consideration and Approval to Increase the Previously Approved Contracts with Indefinite Delivery/ indefinite Quantity IDIQ for IT Consulting and Staffing to Support IT Project Plan Amount from $2 million per year for three years to $3 million not to exceed. Mr. Pacheco.
Well, as you recall from the last work session, we did a presentation, uh, and went through how we were spending the money and how the money would be spent coming up to support a variety of, uh, different things, including the ERP preparation work. And so what we're asking here is to increase the spend authority, just the spend authority, to $3 million.
Right. And this was as a result of the great resignation, right? There's been a lot of change in this area?
A large part of that was, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. There are no questions, clarifications, we'll entertain a motion. So move from Dr. Morrison.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 5E, Consideration and Approval of a Seven-Month Service Authorization with DNM LLC for Consulting Services in Support of the Three Goals and Eight Principles, Three GAP, in an Amount Up to $970,060. I think there's some additional information there at your desk as well. Ms. Alanis.
I don't, I don't believe there is on this one. Is there?
Oh, is this not, is this not it?
Yeah.
Yes, did they?
There's something here.
Oh, you know what, they may have added the signature page.
Okay.
It was attached, I apologize, yes.
Okay, no worries, I just wanted to make sure that, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. Susan Alanis, Chief Operating Officer. And this basically is the, um, the, uh, the contract that we've used for a number of years to support the Three Goals and Eight Principles. It provided project managers, uh, or program managers to support each one of the champions of those principles. This is the final, um, service authorization under the agreement that had been, the master agreement that had been previously, um, awarded to DNM. And you'll see that we've continued to scale down the support as we continue to take a lot of that work in-house. And it outlines some of the priorities that will be for the remaining seven months of their engagement, um, on the third page. We've given you a, or fourth page, excuse me. We've given you a thorough history of, of what that, um, engagement has looked like. And we've also listed a number of the accomplishments that have been included or achieved by each of those principal panels during that time period as well.
Any questions or clarifications for Ms. Alanis?
Who is the Special Assistant to the Chancellor?
Dr. Stephanie-
Dr. T. F. R. Oh.
Dr. Stephanie Hill.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Greenhill. Seconded by Mr. Kine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Let's see. Go over to 5F, Consideration and Approval of Contract with FMLA Source Inc. for Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA, and American Disability Act, ADA, Services to the TCCD for a Period of One Year with Four One-Year Options to Renew Annual Cost Not to Exceed $175,000. Alanis.
So we've been working in human resources to identify, um, areas that are transactional in nature that we could benefit from outside support to, to administer those programs. Last year, a couple of them included unemployment, um, management and administration, as well as employment verification that we've outsourced. This outsources the management of the Family Medical Leave Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act. What I would suggest is, um, I think that the true benefit of this is, I believe it will allow improved customer service as well as consistency of application of those benefits for our employees as well. We piggybacked on the procurement that was, uh, managed by the City of Fort Worth in, um, garnering these terms, and, uh, we are looking forward to implementing. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any clarifications or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Greenhill, and seconded by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, I'm really excited to hear that we're going to have this in place to help our employees. That's great. Consideration and Approval of, uh, Contract with Chambers Engineering LLC to Replace Sewer Lines at Northeast Campus in the Amount of $1,271,828.44.
The ongoing infrastructure improvement, and this is very old clay pipes, that are very important to the operation of that campus.
Any reason why this should not be delayed? I'm kidding.
Yes.
I can think of a few, but-
Sorry.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Greenhill. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 5H, Consideration and Approval of a Change Order with Freedom Construction for the District-Wide Basic and Provisional Classroom Upgrades Project in the Amount of $346,929.40.
Yes, this is a continuation of the schedule of classroom renovations that we presented to you some time ago. In this particular instance, um, I'll, I'll note that there's a number of ADA improvements that are triggered by the renovations that occurred that were not included in the original contract, but are required for us to complete the work. The most efficient and, uh, cost-effective way for us to do that is to offer a change order to the firm that's already mobilized on site, completing those renovations to, to do this. We go through a, um, a process with the state to do inspections and so on of our ADA compliance whenever we do renovations exceeding $50,000 in cost.
Any questions or clarifications for Ms. Alanis on this?
Move to approve.
Move to approve from Mr. Hornsby. Seconded by Mr. Kine. All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right, thank you, Ms. Alanis. We have the redistricting briefing, Ms. Bracken.
Good evening. Good evening, can we, good evening. Do we have Lisa on the? We're here, we're here for the next round in our redistricting process, and we have Lisa McBride, who will be joining us, um, by, by, um, TV. And she has a presentation. We also have our demographers present to, um, to discuss a few things. First, presentation of data from the 2020 census and an analysis of that data, and then a presentation of the initial redistricting map that's been prepared in reliance upon that information. So if you get Ms. McBride on the phone, on the Zoom. Are you there, Lisa?
Can you speak for me?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Carol. Is the technology, is it okay for me to continue?
We'll be right with you, Ms. McBride.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Ms. McBride, we'll be right back with you. Thank you. Okay. All right, Ms. McBride? Are you still there?
I'm still here, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much for your patience with us. I'm sorry, we just had to take a very short break, so.
No problem at all, completely understandable. Well, it's good to be with you again this evening, tonight. I'm here with my colleague, Ashley White, who's joining by video. And in person, um, you have Jesse Gaines, um, as well as half of our, uh, demography team, Matthew Cluck, um, who's worked really hard on the census data, um, both 2010 and 2020, as well as the proposed map. So since we have a lot to cover with you this evening, we'll jump right in. I believe Mr. Gaines is going to begin with telling us a little bit about where we've been, a legal refresher before jumping into the numbers.
Thank you very much. Uh, it continues to be a great honor and a great privilege to-
I think your mic's not on, Mr. Gaines, is it? I think it is, okay.
It continues to be a great honor for me and a great privilege to, uh, work with this, uh, board. As all of you know, I talk about it all the time. I was a volunteer for many, many years on the redistricting. Sometimes I was the only one that showed up, that had an opinion on trying to get the lines right. And, uh, finally, I think the district just decided that, uh, they should maybe bring me on and put it in a paid position, since I've been volunteering for so long. But thank you, Lisa, it's a privilege to work with Lisa McBride and the team that she has assembled. What we talked about is just basically a legal overview. We've talked about this, uh, one board meeting before. So redistricting is a process by which the boundaries of these districts, single-member districts, are, are redrawn in response to changes in our population. And we do it after each census. And that's, uh, what the redistricting is all about. Now, the legal overview. The system's 2020 census data shows that the population of the most populous single-member district exceed the population of the least populous by more than 10%. The system current single-member district map must be redrawn. We exceed that, so it must be redrawn. So that each single-member district is now, has to be near equal population of the most populous single-member district, does not exceed the population of the least populous single-member district by more than 10%. Now, 10 years ago, we, we got the, uh, had the deviation below 2%, which is excellent. Basically, all the districts were basically at the same population. And to show how great it was, it only went up to 13 point something this time. So we're just out of bounds. We're not like some districts I worked with, they're 28%, 30, 30%, 35%. So we're, so we're in a good process. So one man, one vote, equal protection clause of the Constitution, and Section 2 Voting Rights Act is things that we have to be concerned about. One person, one vote. And for all of you know, judicial and executive officers of districts are not subject to the one-person, one-vote standard. Like judges in our county, they're not subject to the one vote, one-person standard. It's only districts such as school districts, legislative bodies, bodies that make legislative decisions, like you make here, which you've been debating tonight. bodies that make legislative decisions, like you make here, which you've been debating tonight. These are the districts that have the one-person, one-vote, and it gives everybody an equal opportunity to have a vote to be cast. So what does the census report? The census reports several different population measures, and we'll just talk about three for tonight. Total population, voting age population, and citizen voting age population, for our purpose. The total population is all persons residing in the jurisdiction on census date, April 1st, 2020. Okay, where you reside, April 1st, 2020, that's when it's taken. Now, I have some people tell me, Ms. Gaines, I was in jail in La Mesa, but I live in Fort Worth, Tarrant County, Texas, on April 1st. You will be counted in La Mesa, you will not be counted in Tarrant County. You are counted where you live, where you physically at on April 1st, and that's what the total population is. Now, voting age, population, we talk about VAP. The number of persons on April 1st, 2020, who were 18 years of older in the jurisdiction, that's what voting age population means. Citizen voting age, we talk about that a lot, citizen voting age, and it's called CVAP. That's the number of persons who are 18 years of age or older, who are citizens in the jurisdiction calculated using data from the American survey, community survey data. And those are the persons who can vote, you have to be a citizen in this country in order to vote. Now, but the district lines are determined by the number of persons, it's not determined by those who eligible. And I believe with that, I'm gonna ask my colleague Lisa to move us to the next level. Lisa.
Thank you so much, Jesse. So what you have before you are the current contours of your seven single-member districts, each identified with a unique color that we'll use throughout this redistricting process. And as Jesse indicated, when we talk about redistricting, what we're talking about is shifting the boundaries between single-member districts in order to make your single-member districts more balanced, in terms of your total population. So every time we move a line or move, change the boundary, we're moving people into and out of a single-member district. And as Jesse telegraphed, you did such a great job in 2010 in rebalancing, getting under 5%, getting under 2%, that you're just barely over 10%. But that's not the test, the test is not how far over 10%, it's just if you're over 10%, you've gotta rebalance. So we definitely have to rebalance, so we'll be drawing, redrawing some lines. But because you're not very much over that 10% mark, we don't have to do very much in order to get you back into balance. And so that's what the first map shows. But I'd like to go over some of your data, your 2010 data. So what you have in front of you is total population at the top in blue. On the left-hand side is total population expressed as a raw number, and on the right-hand side is total population expressed as a percentage. And then if you look at the bottom chart in green, there's your voting age population expressed as a percentage, and your citizen voting age population expressed as a percentage. When we're looking at minority voting strength under the Voting Rights Act, we do look at voting age population, and even more importantly, citizen voting age population, because that's a better proxy for those people who are actually exercising the right to vote than total population is. So when we're trying to get an approximation of voting strength, we do look at citizen voting age population and voting age population. But let's look at these 2010 numbers. So your total population in 2010 was about 1.8 million. The ideal size, or average size of your single-member district, so if you were to take that total population, 1.8 million, and divide it by 7, that perfect size of each of your seven single-member districts would have been 248,491. That's what's in red down there. Obviously, each single-member district was not that size. If you look at the total column that's in the middle of the top chart, the top chart is divided into total population as a raw number, total population as a percentage. If you look in the middle, there's a column that says total, that's the total population of each of your single-member districts. And if you look at those total numbers, for example, single-member district 1 is 259,186. Single-member district 2 was 259,786. Those numbers really hover around that ideal size, that 258,000, very, very closely. That's why you were at a 1.3% differential. Your biggest or your most populous single-member district was single-member district 2, at 259,786, you know, barely 1,000 over that ideal size. And your smallest single-member district was 256,573, about 2,000 persons under that ideal size. So very tightly wound around that ideal size. Looking at your total population percentages, you're about 51.8% Anglo, 4.6% Asian, 14.5% African-American, and 26.7% Hispanic or Latino. Then looking at your citizen voting age population, I would point out, and we're gonna track this again in 2020, that single-member district 1, you had about 34.3% citizen voting age population that was Hispanic. And single-member district 6, you had 44.7% citizen voting age population African-American. We'll wanna track those numbers for purposes of the Voting Rights Act in comparison to where you are in 2020. And so that is the next slide. These are your 2020 numbers pulled down from the 2020 census. You went from 1.8 total population to about 2.1 million total population, and that average size increased from 258,000 to about 301,000. So if you took that 2.1 and divided it by 7, the ideal size of each of your seven single-member districts would be about 301,000 persons. And you can see that each single-member district, looking at that middle column, that middle total column in blue, that basically is the dividing line between the total population raw numbers on the left, and the total population percentages on the right, you will see that those total populations of each of your single-member districts are not hovering as closely around that ideal size anymore. Your smallest single-member district, single-member district number 3 now, is about 290,000, so about 11,000, almost 11,000, under that ideal size. And your largest single-member district, which is single-member district number 4 now, is at 330,434, so about 29,000 over that ideal size. So you are gonna have a differential, and in fact, that differential is over 10%. The difference between the most and least populous single-member district is about 13.6%. So you are definitely over that 10%. But then look at how your population percentages have grown. Your total population percentage is for Anglo, 42.9%. So the Anglo percentage has decreased. Your Asian percentage, total population has increased, it's at now at 6.1%. Your African-American total population has slightly increased at 17%. And your Hispanic total population has increased at 29.4%. Then looking at those two numbers that I asked you to keep in mind, the citizen voting age population, looking at the tan chart in the bottom right-hand corner, we were looking at single-member district number 1 and single-member district number 6. In single-member district number 1, that Hispanic citizen voting age population has increased to 40.7%. And the African-American citizen voting age population in single-member district number 2 has kinda held steady, a slight decrease, but basically still at 44%, 44.2% as opposed to 44.7% in 2010. The next slide goes over some of those changes that I just discussed. So these show the changes from 2010 to 2020. On the, in blue, is the raw population changes for your total population in each single-member district. On the right in blue are the percent changes for your total population, and in the voting age population in green on the bottom, and the citizen voting age population in tan on the bottom. So I'd wanna draw your attention again to that middle column in blue, which has total at the top. You can see that each one of your single-member districts increased in size, but they didn't increase by the same amount. So you've got some single-member districts that are growing faster than other single-member districts, for a total increase of about 301,000 persons district-wide. And you can see that, looking at your total population percentages, your Anglo population decreased by about 9%. Your Asian population increased by about 1.4%. Your African-American, about 2.5%. And your Hispanic, by 2.7. And going down to that tan chart, looking at single-member district 1, that Hispanic citizen voting age population in single-member district number 1 increased by 6.5% from 2010 to 2020. And in the African-American, in single-member district number 6, decreased by 0.5%. So not a full percent with respect to that, so essentially holding steady in single-member district number 6. And so this chart really helps to explain why you had such a small deviation. It's another way of mathematically looking at the relative sizes of your single-member districts. The 10% number that we looked at at the previous slide was analyzing the percent deviation of your most populous district from your least populous district, and it was definitely over 10% at 13.6%. What this chart analyzes is each single-member district's deviation from the ideal size. So in that first column, you have all of your single-member districts listed. Column number 2, you have the total population of each of your single-member districts. And then that third column is the ideal size. If we were to take your current total population district-wide and divided by 7, 301,000 would be the size each one of your single-member districts would be. And now we're in that fourth column comparing what your total population is to the ideal size. So you can see in raw numbers how far they are off from the ideal size. And then that last column gives you the percentage of their deviation from the ideal size. And then the information at the bottom in the red box gives you the total range of deviation from the ideal size. So taking the largest deviation, which is single-member district number 4, your largest single-member district, it's about 9.6 larger than the ideal size. And adding that to your smallest single-member district, which is a negative 3.5% smaller than your ideal size, your total range of deviation is about 13.1%. So a very similar number as analyzing the difference in deviation from your most and least populous district, analyzing them in comparison to the ideal size. You get a similar evaluation, that under both methods, you're definitely over 10%. So you have to redistrict to bring it back into balance, so each of your single-member districts are near equal to each other, and were nearly equal to that ideal size of about 301,000 persons. And so some key takeaways from all that information that was presented is that you've grown by about 301,000, so you've grown by a single-member district. Your ideal size is about 305,000, so you've grown district or system-wide by a single-member district. So pretty significant growth. You were at 1.8 million, now you're at 2.1 million. The difference between your most and least populous single-member district is about 13.6%. And your most and least populous single-member districts have not stayed the same over the decade, they have changed. So in 2010, your most populous single-member district was single-member district number 2, now it's single-member district number 4. And your least populous single-member district in 2010 was single-member district number 7. Flash forward 10 years to 2020, your most populous single-member district is single-member district number 3. So redistricting is definitely now required. We have included analysis of each of your seven single-member districts, all the information that was on those first three charts, about the 2010 census, the 2020 census, and the change between those time periods for each single-member district. Because sometimes it's hard to look at your individual single-member district on those three charts. And so for each single-member district, we've placed the relevant information from those three charts on one slide for each single-member district. Matthew, I know you're in the audience, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about these next seven slides that go over the data for each single-member district. But it's all the information that was packed into the three slides that I've just gone over.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa, good evening, everyone. My name's Matthew Cluck, I'm with Zonda Education, part of the demographic team there, and also a former TCC student, so it's kinda fun to come out and present to y'all, so.
That's great, welcome back, Matthew.
Thank you. All right, so these next seven slides, we're gonna go kinda quick on these. So district, we're gonna go district by district. So District 1, high level here, so each column represents census data behind our census blocks there. So in 2010, our first column there, our census data, and then 2020, our census data behind District 1. And then 2010 to 2020, that last column is our net change between looking at 2010 versus 2020. So with District 1, kind of a key thing Lisa's already mentioned, we're wanting to track that Hispanic CVAP number there. So in 2010, it was 34.3%, and then in 2020, it's grown to 6.5% up to 40.7%. So any plans we put forth, we're gonna try to maintain that percentage level as best as we can. And also for District 1, much like every other district, we saw growth, about average growth around 38,000 persons, growing pretty close to our targeted average of 301,000 persons. Next slide, please, Lisa.
That makes it a little larger, I'll remember that this time, there we go.
All right. So District 2, pretty simple on District 2. So it grew about the same rate as District 1. It's just, it didn't quite grow enough close to our average. So we're gonna look at bringing population into District 2 from other districts around it. So we can go to the next slide. All right, so District 3, very similar to District 2. So similar growth, around 32,000 persons added to District 3. And we're looking at now 290,942 persons added, or, I'm sorry, within the bounds of the 2020 census blocks there, within the bounds of District 3. That's still not quite where we want it to be, as far as getting it to our 301,000 thereabout average. So we can go to the next slide, please. So District 4, so that is, that's our big grower there. So District 4 grew 72,000 persons, all the way up to 330,434 persons. So we're gonna look to get population out of District 4 and spread some of the persons out. District 5, please. District 5 grew, of course, 40,000 persons. And with District 5, though, we're looking at growth to very close to our average. So any plans we were putting forth are, we're not really seeing any change needed with District 5. We can go to District 6. Similar idea with District 5, steady growth throughout the district, up to 305,000 persons now, close to our average. And then also, we're gonna wanna point out our citizen voting age population percentages, with African-American percentage there, around 44%. We're gonna look to maintain that level of voter integrity there. District 7, please.
All right.
All right, so District 7, steady growth, just like 5 and 6. Where we, on our first plan we put forth, we're not even touching District 7. So we can keep all that in mind, we can go to Plan 1 now. So what you're looking at now is the Plan 1 that we've designed so far. So the blue outline is the. So the blue outline is the current boundaries in place. And then when you see the color kind of bleed over to the northeast, really, you're going to see that's the changes we've made with the boundaries. So we can go to the next slide, and I believe we have them circled. So yeah, all the changes, we have four changes, really, three main changes, all towards the northeast, affecting Districts 1, 2, 3, and 4. Specifically, 2, 3, and 4. And then we'll kind of show what we did with District 1 as well. But the change with District 1 was pretty simple. So we can go to the next slide, please. All right. So like Lisa showed earlier, this is kind of our breakdown of all the census data that we had shown, except this time, it's the census data behind our Plan 1 boundaries. So our deviation now, we got it down to 3.4% since y'all did such an amazing job 10 years ago. It was some pretty simple changes to get below that 10%. And even 5% was, getting below 5% was not too difficult. So our most and least populous districts now are Districts 2 and District 7, highlighted in the center there. And then also, our citizen voting age population percentages are key numbers there, right? So 40.7%. That's going to remain the same compared to our 2020 census. And then our African-American citizen voting age percentage with District 6 is also around 44%. So we've maintained the integrity there as far as voting strength. Okay? We can go to the next, please. I think you were going to speak on this one, Lisa.
Yes. So this is similar to the last chart that we had, and it's again, just comparing each of your single-member districts, what their total population under Plan 1 is in comparison to the ideal size. That's that third column. And then the fourth column, in terms of raw numbers, tells you how far under or over they are from the ideal size. Look at these numbers. They're much closer than your 2020 numbers for being over and under your ideal size. And that last column, you can see the over and under is very tight. It's about 1%, up 2% either way, being over/under, making for the total range of deviation from the ideal size being about 3.3%. So whether we look at deviation from the ideal size or deviation between your most and least populous single-member district, we're right about 3% in some change. So either calculation shows that Plan 1 is a pretty tight readjustment or rebalancing of population to come under that 10% rule, either way you look at it.
All right. So this next slide, we're just kind of zoomed in on our area of change. Anything outside of this box, nothing was adjusted compared to the current plan in place. So every change really is towards the northeast bit of the district. So we can go to the next. So our first change, we're naming it Change A right now. Our first goal was getting population out of District 4. So this was the first adjustment we made. We had District 2 carve into District 4 a bit. We saw a good opportunity there, going west, the west boundary being Denton Highway 377, and then towards the south, Chapman Road. And then kind of a marker or a point of reference we have is Cap Smith Park is in there. So that area is now part of District 2 under this plan. Okay? And then we can go to Change B. So similar idea with Change A. We're trying to get population out of District 4, getting it closer to the average. So we saw a good opportunity here, a little further south of Change A, where we just sliced down the boundary there and cleaned it up a bit. And now, it's Roof Snow Drive is the western boundary. And then some points of references in there, Liberty Park's in there, and then Clyde Zeller Park is in there as well. Okay? We go to Change C. So Change C was a minor fix we did. It was not for population, but rather for kind of, you know, simplifying the boundary that's currently in place. So the one that's currently in place kind of loops into Thousand Oaks Country Club. And since we're kind of in that area, we just decided to simplify it a bit and give that to District 1 with, and that had no real impact on demographics. It added seven people to District 1, but it makes the boundary much cleaner and simpler there. Okay? We can go to Change D. So our last change was a result of needing population in 3. And then we also needed to take some of the excess population that District 2 received from District 4. So it was a good cascading adjustment there. So District 3 gained Central Drive up to Jackson Road, and then going east-west is Glade Road now. So that's kind of a clean boundary that we adjusted where 3 gained some population. And that's kind of near Meadowbrook Park. It's not quite in there, but that's that area there. Okay? We can go to the next slide, please. So now, like I showed earlier, breaking down 2010 census, 2020 census. And now, the third column, though, is our Plan 1 proposed. So we can have them all on one breakdown there. So District 1, it's important, like I mentioned, we maintained that Hispanic voter integrity. We just added seven persons from that small Thousand Oaks Country Club adjustment to simplify the boundary. So our total population there is well within the average, and not much adjustment was done to District 1. Okay? District 2. So District 2, we needed to get population into. So we added about 13,000, 14,000 persons, getting it closer to our average and with our changes we've made with our proposed plan. We can go to the next slide, please. Same idea with District 3, added around 10, 11,000 persons with our proposed plan changes. We can go to District 4 there. So this was the one where we had to carve out some population in places. So we donated population to some of the surrounding single-member districts, got it down to 305,585 persons, and also maintained the 301,000 thereabout average. Okay? District 5. So these next ones are going to look pretty similar, Districts 5, 6, and 7. So District 5, we didn't see a need to change anything. So it was so close to the average, that 2020 column and that Plan 1 column are going to look exactly the same. District 6, it's going to look, same idea. We're making no changes to District 6 with our Plan 1. And then looking at, you know, our African-American voting strength there is maintained as well. Okay? And then the last one, no change with District 7 with Plan 1. So overall, the plan changes are pretty simple, pretty much due to how well y'all did 10 years ago. So that's it from me. I don't know if Lisa had anything else.
Thanks, Matthew. So we'd like to spend some time talking with you, the board, about whether you have any questions regarding either the census data, change analysis, or Plan 1. Because we've talked about all three tonight.
Any questions or clarifications from Ms. McBride or Mr. Cluck? No? Very thorough information. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. One more question. Do you see Plan 1 is going to be an acceptable plan? Are there any comments or things you want us to take back to consider in order to make adjustments to Plan 1? And then, just to telegraph, I do want to begin a conversation if Plan 1 looks like we're getting pretty close to what's acceptable to the board about the public input process.
As the representative of District 4, I have some, I'd like to look at it some more.
Certainly, certainly.
I'm not ready to accept it.
Right, right. Well, and I think, and thank you for that comment, because I would think that Ms. McBride, at some point, you will go over this about how we can reach out to share this with others so that we can, of course, get the public input. Thank you for that, Bill. Anybody else have any comment or questions for Ms. McBride? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for the thorough analysis. I would be interested to know, and your maps were very helpful, are there any other additional boundaries other than roads? So city boundaries, school district boundaries, that we should have overlaid on this map just to make us aware of any impacts? Where districts have perhaps moved from one city to another, probably in the northeastern area.
We can definitely do that. We can definitely bring that overlay. The more we overlay, the busier a static map will look. But we certainly can have our demographers present at the next meeting so that you can also see a dynamic overlay. So we'll try to present a static map that has school district boundaries as well as city boundaries. But if that gets a little too busy for you, we can also, in real time, at your next meeting, just show you the overlay of school districts. Once you've got that, then show you the overlay of cities. That might make it a little cleaner.
For that comment. Questions, Dr. Morrison, Ms. Leonard? No? Mr. Barr? Okay. All right. Ms. McBride, I think we'll go on to the next step. Ms. Bracken, yes, if you don't mind, just take us on to the next step, please.
Sure. So next step would be getting any comments for you all, from you all, in terms of any adjustments or additional things you want to consider. We have noted to bring back those overlays and the opportunity for you to see those overlays in real time. But then, we need to begin thinking about how we engage the public. And so, you know, one thing that I am seeing really being utilized this round of redistricting is your website, placing any proposed maps, the census data information that we presented on your website, and opening a mechanism on your website for written comment. Then, if we think that the changes that have been proposed in Plan 1 or a similar set of changes, doesn't have to be necessarily those set of changes, but relatively minor amount of changes, we might not need as robust a public engagement process as some other entities have gone through. You might decide to have, you know, one public hearing to talk about the map, or you might decide to have two, as opposed to having one in each single-member district, when we have some single-member districts that aren't even changing, at least under Plan 1. So it's completely up to you, but I would suggest that we use a combination of your website so that we can get written public comments and an opportunity for other people not only to comment on our map, but to submit through the website an alternative map that the board could consider. And then, we need to figure out how many actual, physical public hearings we're going to have, keeping in mind that, you know, at least under Plan 1, we're only impacting three single-member districts.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you for that presentation, Ms. McBride. Ms. Bracken?
Yes, ma'am. I think that concludes today's piece of the redistricting position. Thinking forward to the next one, I hear you saying you want to hear our demographers presenting a second iteration of the map with the overlays. Mr. Greenhill, in particular, if you find that you have any changes that you would like to have them consider, if you could communicate those with me, then we can, Ms. McBride and the demography team can be prepared to address those at the meeting. The other thing that is, I guess this is sort of homework for the trustees between now and our meeting in May, is to have conversations with your stakeholders and come back to make a decision at the next meeting about the kind of public comment that you want to facilitate and give guidance to the staff on what you want us to make happen in that regard.
Okay.
Just a quick question. Carol, would you be able to just let us know what's been done in the past regarding those public meetings? It doesn't have to be tonight, but if you'd be able to prepare something to just let us know what's been successful in the past and what we've learned, best practices as well?
And I think the answer has differed greatly when the maps change a great deal. Obviously, the public comment is different than when we're dealing with a much more limited set of changes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McBride. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Cluck and Mr. Gaines. It was very informative.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Okay. Let's see. Let me get back to our agenda here. Okay. I think we have, you're up, Ms. Allenese, for the monthly financial report.
Yes. So I believe you've got the financial report in your packet. And at this point, our total income is at 87.4% of our projected for the year, and that's on track with the, well, sorry, let me back up. Tuition is actually still down about $7 million, which we had anticipated. We're $15 million ahead of where we were last year for tax revenue. So those largely offset, and so we're reasonably on track. We're at about 54% of our expenditures as well. One thing I want to mention to you, just to prepare you a little bit for what's going to be happening in May, trustee declines used the word momentum earlier, and we've got a lot of momentum on it, a variety of different things. And so, we're going to be presenting some pretty significant financial items to you next month. One of those includes the ERP contracts that we've been actively negotiating and intend to set up a separate fund for that project so that we can track the expenditures over time. I think you've been preparing yourselves that that's a 60-plus million dollar investment that we'll be making over a three-and-a-half-year period. And so, we'll be bringing to you an explanation of what that budget looks like. In addition, we have about $75 million of construction contracts on next months as well because of the progress we're making both at Northwest and at Southeast. And we have the debt sale that we are anticipating. We will recommend $400 million in June, but we'll ask, seek your authorization. One thing I'll remind you, probably a year and a half or more ago, we brought to the board and the board adopted a fund balance policy and a debt policy that included a variety of metrics that we could gauge our fiscal health. And so, we will be bringing information to you to look at those so that you can gauge those decisions within the context of the policies that we've established. As you're well aware, we've been accumulating fund balance in anticipation of some major technology investments that we'll have before you. So big month next month, so a lot to look forward to. Also, in your packet, you've got an investment report. And we've actually distributed around the table a new format that we are proposing from our financial advisors. As you know, we've turned over to them to actively manage our investment account as we've made the changes to that policy as well. What, it's teeny-tiny up there, but this is the format. And then, what I would also suggest is that, starting next month, we will be bringing to you a quarterly benchmark comparison. That's one of the requirements in the contract with our financial advisor, is that that will help you grade their paper essentially about how they're doing compared to other benchmark funds. And so, we'll ask them to participate in those presentations each quarter. I'm going to ask Gina to scroll down to the second page of this. And one of the things you'll notice is one of the big activities over And one of the things I'll note, you'll notice is, one of the big activities over the last few months has been the diversification of our investments and also managing our bond proceeds that we have, preparing for the bond proceeds that we would envision after the sale this summer. And you can see before the, the distribution of those investments, before and after, we've reduced the investments in the local government investment pools and, and started to put those in other areas as we work to have longer durations of some of those investments. But you can see the, the work that's being done in that area. But one of the things that we want to do, particularly after the bond sale, when we'll have even more money invested in any given time, is give you an opportunity every quarter to visit with our financial advisor to hear how that's going. They have far more expertise than I do in that area. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Allenese? Thank you, this is, this is very helpful, the way this is formatted, thank you.
And it's a work in progress, so if there's anything else that you'd like to see, we'd be happy to be responsive to that as well.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, Dr. LeBlanc, Acting Counselor's report, please.
Yes, thank you. So first, you, you received additional responses to questions that were asked by the board at the board retreat, information regarding the information center, as well as registration improvements, et cetera. So you have that, you were given that today. Also, this week, we started the engagement forums. So Susan Allenese, Gloria Maddox, Powell, and myself will be going to all of the campuses. Yesterday, we had our forum here with Trinity River and TCC Connect. We had over 160 people, at least we had 160 chairs that were full, and there were people standing up. So those went, that went really well. We will be going to Southeast Campus tomorrow, and we look forward to conversation there. And then the following week, we'll be going to the other campuses. So that's being well-attended. I've got nice emails saying thank you for coming and, and sharing information. We, we broadened the conversation, so it's really whatever questions they may have and comments that they may have for us, and so far, that's gone well. And there's also today, information on the student technology empowerment. And Bob, you're going to be doing that? Okay?
Bob Pacheco, not Susan Allenese. Well, we've, this was a request from Dr. Morrison, from the last working session here. And so what we did is IT worked with the rest of the district, and we compiled a narrative of what we've been doing since COVID started on how we bridge the, the digital divide for our students that don't have high-speed access at their house, as well as computers or devices that they can be able to take the courses online. So the, the memo that we have right here goes into detail. I'm not going to get into too much details unless you want to ask certain questions about it. But it really starts off with how we responded initially with the restrictions that we had, because everything was really super allocated. And, and it goes through how during that timeframe, we went with cellular devices to give to the students so that they can be able to do their work. And then over the course of the last two years, we've, you know, with the lessons learned, we have upgraded the equipment to Microsoft devices. And we now have, at, at the end of this, we have 3,000 devices that are distributed across the, the entire district, and they're issued by the libraries. And so if you look on the second page of the information memo, you can see our chart. And, you know, as of right now, we have 1,200 devices that are actually being used by our students across the district. And we do have the capacity to go to up to 3,000. And we do have communication programs that we have. The biggest one that really tells us that during new student orientation, we tell the students that if they need devices, they can check them out for the entire semester. And, and the Wi-Fi is free, or the internet's free to them through the cellular device, to, to no cost. And so we really have made a tremendous transformation from the way we used to do things to what we do now. So there is no student that, that comes to TCC, they don't have a device, we can take care of that. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for this information. I think this is a great way to address, in meeting the students where they are.
It's a compelling story.
It is a very compelling story. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you for the, thank you for that, yes.
Okay, there are no further questions. We have no closed session, Ms. Bracken, not tonight? Okay, great. Okay, so our next meeting, we'll be adjourning, and we'll be meeting in May, the 12th. I believe we have a work session scheduled. Again, wanted to thank everyone for all the extra work and the extra efforts. And I think that the impact is showing. We look forward to graduation, so we'll be able to talk about that and at our next board meeting, but the work session, I believe, is the 12th, is that correct? Okay, all right, thank you, everyone. I guess anyone want to make motion to adjourn? So moved by Mr. Hornsby. Great, thank you, have a good evening. Thank you, everyone. Thank, thank everyone for your help.